Good evening. Today is February 27th, 2025, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the District 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in the audience and those watching online. Director Chester, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? So moved. Moved by Director Chester?
I'm second.
Second by Director Mickelson? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say nay? The motion carries unanimously. We will start off this evening's meeting with a report from Eagle Ridge Middle School, Hidden Valley Elementary School, and Harriet Bishop Elementary School. From Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, Principals Dave Helke, Ken Essay, Christine Black, and their special guests.
Thank you Chair Wurbe, members of the board. Calling up our principals at this time. This is our next iteration of our school report series. If the board recalls, we are working to highlight our essential elements of cultural proficiency through the leadership moves and what is living and breathing in each of these schools each and every day. The essential element we're focused on this week is, for this session, is institutionalizing cultural knowledge. So hopefully, I believe you will hear example after example of how these three great leaders are leading through that lens of cultural proficiency and how it's showing up in the daily lived experience of our students and families. I believe Principal Essay is first.
Let's go. Good evening Board Chair, School Board, Dr. Belmont, and our entire 191 community. I thank you all for the love, passion, and support you bring for our students, our families, and our staff. My name is Ken Essay. I have the honor of being principal at Harriet Bishop Elementary School. Tonight I will speak on behalf of all of the incredible students, our inspiring staff, and our supportive families. I have two slides for you. The first slide, which you see in front of you, will discuss some of the things we've done as adults in our system. And the second slide will show you some things we've done to empower our youth voice and develop our student leaders. These two slides help explain our journey as it relates to institutionalizing cultural knowledge in combination with our greater purpose, which is to maximize the learning and development of every student who enters our building every single day. As I travel throughout this country, I visit schools. Many of them sound like, feel like, and look like the schools that I attended over 40 years ago. Well, not at Harriet Bishop. We have evolved to meet the needs of our students, families, and staff. Slide one, as you see right now, is our journey over the past eight years at Harriet Bishop Elementary School. This journey of learning will look at a comparison of who Harriet Bishop as a building was in 2016-17 and who we are now in 24-25. As we have evolved as a building, so have our practices, our people, and our learning environment. Represented in this slide is some of the things we've done as adults, meaning families, staff, district office, to better meet the needs of our students and families. When you look back at 2016-2017 and you look at the graph, our largest student group was white. In 2024-25, our largest student group is Latinx. When you look at 16-17 and we look at the languages spoken by our students and families, you will see that 75.1% of our students, their home language was English. Now in 2024-25, that number has shifted, and 49.5% of our families have a home language of English. This means that over half of our students and their families are bilingual or trilingual. And we have 24 different home languages represented within our building. What a beautiful, rich, vibrant, diverse community. With all this beautiful growth, we have learned to grow. Grow, we've learned new strategies, and we've created a beautifully rich, diverse school where students, staff, and families feel welcomed, included, and valued. Starts with the mural as you walk into our building. If you haven't seen it, stop by and check it out. It was followed by our building's commitment to a program called Speak Up, which teaches young people and adults to speak up for others and ensure that they all feel like they can show up as their true authentic selves and thrive as a learner. We want to teach the power of our voice and how we can use it to make our world a stronger place. As you continue on the journey, you will see liaisons on here. They have been such an important part of building community. Christine and I partner in sharing of the liaisons, and it can be on a daily basis where we share that liaison. They might start at Harriet Bishop, go to Hidden Valley, and then come back to Harriet Bishop to meet the needs of our families. We've recruited and hired linguistically gifted staff. As of today, we have 16 bilingual staff that work at Harriet Bishop, representing seven of our 24 home languages. We've done home visits by staff. We've done equity training for our PTO. We've done scaffolding, a commitment to Tier One instruction, using and utilizing ISIS, Dandra, Amina, and the team to make our Tier One instruction better. We recognize that strategies for ML students are good strategies for all students. Our equity team as a building, we've recruited and found folks with diverse experiences that help our staff and our community learn more about how we can get better. We've had a Spanish advisory, PTO-inclusive events, commitment from our PTO to ensure that no event at Harriet Bishop costs families money to attend. In the past two years, 54 students have exited from ML service, and our goals as we continue to move forward is to continue to be more inclusive. Our goals for '25-26 will be focusing on students who receive special education services. We want to continue to make our building better and help our students embrace their strengths, find themselves, and pursue their dreams. We've also been working hard to find student voice and build student leadership. This year, we put our planning into action, and the rewards have been incredible. I could try to talk about it, and I could try to justify, and so that I could put the words to the magic, but I'm going to let them tell you with a video that we put together. So this leadership program helps our youth find their voice, create goals, and help our school grow and get better. Here's a few of them sharing their experience.
I also find it like helping others and making others do what's right, making others like follow directions, do what they're told, and have integrity.
I would define your trip as helping others when they need it.
Um, like helping other people to be kind.
Being a leadership means like you're very a responsible person and you would help out a lot and do what's best for your community.
Oh, well, it's a good part for Harriet Bishop because I feel like I can just help people. And I can model myself like responsible and respectful.
And it's like a kind way of like respecting everybody.
Making other people feel safe in their schools.
To help people, making videos.
Well, basically, like I like helping out people and...
Probably, um, like that we get to help others and set a really good example for the school and make this world a better place.
That everybody here is something you can learn about and they can make an impact in their life too.
That I could, I just meet new people and I work with people.
Okay, to know the different people and be a part of it.
My favorite part is learning what else to help the school I can do.
That we all work as a group to like make Harriet Bishop a better place.
If that's something.
I can do great stuff like helping people out.
They're so nice and...
That I can heal the area while knowing that I'm doing it.
I can help people more than I used to help people.
That other people think that I'm helpful and they feel that sometimes.
Well, that I can also help people in the Harriet Bishop community, and I didn't really have to say anything.
I hope my impact will be that I get, I can make the school a better place.
I'm not really sure. I feel like I want to help people and I want to make people think that I'm a good person because I just want to be a good person.
To be a runner for the year.
To stop drama.
That we change and that we're not ready to give up.
I really hope I can make this school a better place for everybody and everybody who comes. I hope I can make a very positive space for everybody.
Thank you to our student leaders. Thank you families. Thank you Harriet Bishop staff. And thank you to our district for support. Because of all of you, we are doing great things for students and learning at Harriet Bishop. Thank you.
Thank you to Principal Essay. I think Principal Black is next.
Board Chair, School Board, and Dr. Belmont, thank you for having me this evening to share about Hidden Valley. I feel so proud of our school.
I'm working.
You're going to see a quote from my first slide, and I'm just going to read it. And I want to read the top statement first. At Hidden Valley, you're important. You have a voice. We see you and we like what we see. And so that is important for every kid to feel when they walk through our doors, that they are important, that they are significant, that they are valued. Several years ago at our school, we did a book study with all of the staff from Zaretta Hammond, and it was the book Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain. And this quote, "Cultural responsiveness is not a practice. It's what informs our practice so that we can make better teaching choices for eliciting, engaging, motivating, supporting, and expanding the intellectual capacity of all of our students." So everything that we do at Hidden Valley involves pieces of the quote that you see here. When the school year began, Hidden Valley partnered with Christine Fisher McDonald from our CISA team. And that was a request from our building leadership team to strengthen our collaborative teams. Each team in our school meets weekly to discuss data, and the grade level guarantees the foundational skills that we want to make sure that every child has before they move to the next grade level. And so you'll see a listing of the teams that are there. It includes special education, our multilingual learners, learner teachers, our intervention staff, that includes literacy and math and ADSIS. It's our general education grade level teachers. We also have educational assistants. And throughout the grade, throughout the district, we also have teams that include our school counselors, our school social workers, and so on. And what you'll notice is those circles are all individual because they are individual teams. The power of our work that we do as a school is when we connect all of those teams. And so you'll see with the graphic that is on the right, that is where you'll see the large yellow circle has general education classroom. That's where all the magic happens. And we want to make sure that instead of children having disconnected experiences, being pulled out for this, or pulled out for that level of instruction, or pulled out for this level of instruction for intervention, how can we link those teams together so that a child's experience is as cohesive and connected and comprehensive as possible? And so with our collaborative teams and through the work of Christine Fisher McDonald coming and working with our staff, we've really focused on how can we use grade level guarantees as our singular focus? And how can we have all of our teams working together in collaboration to program for our students? This has been something that we've actually been working on for a couple of years, and we feel like we have a really strong model for that at this time. Now, when we moved into this year, we noticed in our fifth grade that we were really, really struggling in math. Our students were struggling with basic concepts. They were struggling with some of the grade level guarantees. And what we were doing didn't seem to be matching what the students needed. So if you look at this slide, this kind of represents the data that we were looking at. And it represents also one of the changes that we made with our team. We have a teacher, she was going to be coming this evening. She was unable to because of a family emergency. But her name is Nicole Corrego. And she came as a new staff member to 191 from New York, to New York City in New York State. And so she taught in a school that was bilingual for all students as a fifth grade teacher. And she was also working collaboratively and co-teaching with a special education teacher. And so when we were finding these issues that we were having in math, we decided to do what we called a burst of service in fifth grade. And when we did that, we brought our fifth grade special education teacher in to work with our students that had IEP services. We brought in our multilingual teacher to work with students. We had an educational assistant that spoke Spanish, and Nicole taught math bilingually. And so when they did that in the classroom, we started to see big growth starting to happen for our students. Students who were quiet, students who were afraid to have a voice, students who were afraid to take risks, all of a sudden started to grow and flourish and get confident and feel good about their learning and take risks in their learning. And so if you look at the graph to the left, what you'll notice are different pieces of data from fall to winter for Hidden Valley. When we look in our collaborative teams, it's clear we have work to still do. We have students that have made growth in proficiency, which is the left side graph. And so our proficiency for all of our students moved up about 3% between fall and winter. If you look across the graph, you'll see we had a group of students that went down. We have work to do to dig into why did that happen? Our collaborative teams are not prepared to do that work. You'll also see that all of the other groups either went up or stayed the same. We put in place that collaborative team model in December. So what that means is we had one month where we did that burst of service for our students before we did our winter testing. The graph on the right-hand side shows the growth that was made by students. And so if you look at all of our students, you will see that about 55% of our students made typical or aggressive growth. What we know is when students make typical or aggressive growth, over time, our scores will continue to rise and grow. And so I want to draw your attention specifically to our Hispanic students. And you'll see that 73% of our students made typical or aggressive growth, who identify as Hispanic. I'd also like to draw your attention to our fifth grade graph where it shows that 77-78% of our special education students made typical or aggressive growth. And so what I know is if during that time that we put that burst of service together, continuing those practices will yield even greater growth. And what I can with confidence say is that those bar graphs on the left-hand side are going to continue to rise and show continued growth. I'm excited. I would love to be able to come back and actually share with you what our spring growth is because we see it happening every single day with our students. Today I was talking with our teacher that is co-teaching in special education, and I said to him, "What would you have me share with the school board?" And he just said, "There is no comparison between the education that special education students were getting in a part-time pullout that they're getting when I am full-time embedded into the math class." He said, "What they are getting is so much stronger." And so what we're finding is this model is one that we have committed to continuing throughout the rest of the year and actually expanding to other grade levels as well.
Thank you Principal Black. Continuing on our journey on the west side of ISD 191, our middle level, Principal Helke.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Chair Wurbe, and Assistant Superintendent Belmont. First of all, I'm grateful to have the chance to share a little piece of Eagle Ridge with you this evening. I put these two slides together, and I actually come here tonight. I'm going to share from the heart because I truly am one of the luckiest guys around. I get to come into work every day, find a lot of joy and happiness in the kids. I get to see their gifts. I get to help them with their struggles. I get to see them for who they are. And that just brings a ton of joy to the work. So I'm going to separate the two slides. One is going to be really talking a little bit more about what is happening instructionally and just a few examples of some of the things that we're starting to see in our classrooms. And then the second slide is going to really focus on our affinity groups at the middle level. And I have lots of folks here that can share a little bit about those. So the first slide, again, it's all about building a culture of belonging because we all know that learning is not going to happen unless individuals feel like they belong. And so all of our work is about trying to find those ways to provide every single one of our students and staff members in to feel like they belong to the community. And so on this first slide, there's just four different ways that that can happen in the classroom instructionally. One is through scaffolding. And an example of that that has been seen a lot, and I'm seeing it a lot more, are just teachers honoring the languages that our students speak and actually putting some of the slides that they do, including some of the directions, including some of the information in languages other than just English. And also working with students to leverage the tools and things that they might have available to them on their Chromebooks and really allowing students to not allow the language to be the barrier to learning the content. Differentiation is another example, so finding out what students might have interests or passions in because not every student might want to show how they learn something by writing, by filling out a worksheet. And so one of the coolest examples I've seen recently that I shared on here was a teacher that decided to let some students create a rap as a way to get at some poetry components. And so the kids got really into it. They got really excited about it. And that's probably one of many examples of just giving that choice for students. Voice, opportunities, whether it's Socratic seminars where students are sharing ideas and perspectives. There was a earth science, or a chemistry/physical science teacher that had students learning elements and was incorporating their name in elements. So just ways again to honor students, to bring them into the classroom and what's happening. And then the last one is just how we select our books and how we select our music. Our music instructors have just been putting such an emphasis on trying to find genre and musical pieces that are more representative, not only in terms of who the composers are, but just the styles of music that reflect who our students and who our families are. So in the classroom, different ways that you can create belonging. So the second slide, and I'm going to invite Dean Hall and Dean Jenquin up to the table. They're going to share with you some of our affinity group work. And then I'm also going to invite our students that are here to speak also up here to the table.
Hi, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Marielle Jenquin, Dean of Students over at Eagle Ridge Middle School.
And I'm Jennifer Hall, Dean also. We're really excited about the affinity group program that we have at our school, and our students are as well, if you can't already see that on their faces. We just are here to give you a little bit more information about it and how it connects to the culture of belonging at Eagle Ridge. Our affinity groups truly give our students a space to be their authentic self. They get an opportunity to speak openly without barriers about challenges they face in the community, at school, and they can problem solve together too. It creates a space for connectedness and relationship. New friendships are forming within the group. And then we see that carry on throughout the school community as well. Creates space for affirmation, celebration. It really gives our students a chance to celebrate their culture, their heritage, and to have a space for that at school because it is such a big, important part of who they are.
It also creates a space for self-awareness, self-reflection, and self-expression. It has a space for learning and growing and building confidence. I think it helps when you have people around you that have similar experiences with you. Helps you figure out how to navigate the world around you. It creates a space for leadership and development. We do have some standouts that, you know, some of our kids here stand out in different ways. That's why we invited them tonight. It also creates a pathway for belonging throughout high school. So we do have two guests here that are going to be speaking. We will invite them up to the podium.
The two groups that we have represented here with us tonight are the Little Latinos Unidos and then also our Color of Brilliance group.
Hello, everybody. My name is Laura. I'm in eighth grade. I go to Eagle Ridge.
My name is Marielle Alzay, and I'm in eighth grade.
Do I start? Okay. I will start off with the field trip that we took to the BHS yesterday. Our affinity group was able to go to the BHS. The BHS invited us to be part of their showcase yesterday. It was a wonderful experience. I was really grateful to be there, to see all the culture people, see all people getting together and being supportive about it. Nobody was judging nobody. It was really fun, and I'm glad that I was able to be part of there. I'm also glad that our board members and our school district was able to put together a group where I can be myself and a group where all the girls like can be theirselves. I'm pretty sure all the East African girls are very grateful that there's a group where we can talk about our struggles and we can talk about everything we've been through through life and everything our parents have been through. That's basically, that's all I have to say tonight.
So on my side, I would say like I've been a part of the Little Latino Unidos affinity group since we started it last year. It started with the Hispanic Heritage Month in October, and lots of people were interested in continuing to work together and celebrate our culture. One thing that I like about our group is whenever we have a meeting, we sit in a circle and start with asking questions, and the kids answer with how different we do things. We like it because we can learn about how different families do things, different experiences, and how important they are. This group gives kids a chance to open up about their cultures and feel proud of it while we're at school.
No, just was going to open it up to questions, but I think we do that.
Yep, perfect. So I was just going to end quick with this quote. Thank you, everyone, for sharing just a little bit about affinity groups. "We don't get harmony when everybody sings the same note. Only notes that are different can harmonize." The same is true with people, and I think what you see here is we are, we're all humans, we all bring gifts, we all have our struggles, and together is what makes the community that we have. And so I'm grateful for every one of you that showed up tonight. I didn't realize there was going to be so many, that just makes my heart even fonder. So thank you very much. And I think now-
Thanks, Mr. Hulkey. Call back up our principals, and thank you, Board. Thank you, Chair Wurbe, for having another school report. I'll just read real quickly some of the leadership behaviors for institutionalizing cultural knowledge. The CPSS-seeking leader seeks to take information from the school community and from each individual that comes into the school community and integrates that information into the system that provokes significant changes to policies, procedures, practices, and results. Thank you back to you, Chair.
Are there any comments or questions from board members? Director Mickelson?
First, great to see the fan club out here. I was walking in when some of the students were arriving to support the students that were speaking and everything, so it's really great to see that support. So thank everybody, you know, thank you for everybody that came, thank you for the speakers, it was great. And just, I really love hearing about how the schools are really making an effort to meet the children where they're at, to meet all of our students, you know, where they're at, and really bring them along from there versus, you know, trying to pull them kind of to a starting point or just kind of pull them along. It's really, I really applaud all of your efforts to really, again, meet the students from where they're at and incorporate all of their unique experiences and perspectives into what you're doing. So just want to say thank you for everything, and, you know, the success is showing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a, I want to- Thank you. I love these. This is my new favorite when schools do their reports.
Welcome to the club.
I get a little teary-eyed when I see the kids. I have a question for you, Principal Black. I find this very interesting, the idea of co-teaching and bringing everyone. I'm curious how that works, how's that working out staff-wise, being at capacity, having your special ed and your, are they all coming in at the same time? Your ML teacher and your special ed teacher at the same time? And then who's with the other students? Do you have a dedicated fifth-grade special ed teacher or?
So that's a great question. So what we have done is we've intentionally been really careful about how we've created our master schedule. And so we know when the core instruction times are going to be. And so we have, you can choose to use your time differently. So we can either pull out a half-hour group and another half-hour group, or we can group some kids together and put them in one classroom, working with the teacher and other students. So in that one classroom, there are special education multilingual students, students that speak primarily English. But we, like Ken said, what we found is the strategies that are supportive of multilingual students will help all students. And so we've just differentiated and created ways to be creative with scheduling.
I would just love to say that this principal right here has an incredible brain for scheduling. I steal a lot of ideas from her. That's a strength of her.
Good to know. Master schedules are really challenging. Thank you. Okay. Director Alt.
Thank you, Chair Wurbe. Yeah, it's always a great night when we get it, when we receive a school report. And I know it's an even better evening when we have our students and families with us. You bring to life what's going on in our schools and how the work that our principals and teachers are doing are making a positive difference for all of our students. And seeing the system and the adults in the system change and being able to hear the stories and have the support, you know, the students all here supporting each other, it's just really beautiful to see. And one comment that, Principal Black, you had made that just got me thinking, you know, talking about, of course, we're here for learning, and when we see typical or aggressive growth, we know that the scores will continue to grow. And I think it's kind of its own loop where, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, but, you know, as the, as the learning grows, so does the confidence and the proficiency, and it just continues to go and grow. And so, kudos, and thank you all. I know it's not easy work to, to do what you're doing and thinking about so many things, and it's making a difference, and the future's bright.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Anyway. All right. So, yes, one of my favorite, my favorite presentations has always been the school reports as well. And so appreciate you as leaders of our, of our buildings, of the elementary school and the secondary school, and all the work that goes into managing the programs that are administered there and the staff and the students. Principal SA, there's a whole lot of helping going on in your building. The use, the use of the word helping, that's just, I think it's wonderful that they have such a, you know, sweet, caring, like, I want to help my others, you know, friends and students. And to use leadership at that young of an age and plant that seed, I would have never even thought of what, I would know, have no idea what leadership is when I was in second grade. So I just think that that's like, you know, just so fundamental for children to start learning about that stuff in elementary school. So I appreciate that, what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to give credit. A lot of these ideas come from our staff and then come from our students themselves. And I feel like all three of us throughout the presentations, you saw that opportunity to just listen to our students. And when our students speak, it's so powerful. And then our job is to just provide opportunities for them to shine and glow, and then we get out of the way and let the magic happen.
And I would just add to that, what they do at elementary has a huge impact at middle school. So developing that leadership, developing that attitude of helping at elementary comes up into middle school, and then the affinity group work at the middle school, a lot of that is just developing leaders and continuing to develop that so that when they go up to high school, you have those leaders up at the high school.
Yep. Principal Black, I appreciate your, what I really liked hearing about was that a teacher that came from another part of the country came in with her experience and shared that, and it basically turned into something that blossomed here. So listening to somebody else's experience and how that benefited and worked where, in her environment, and then applying it here and seeing how that's impacted us now, I think that just being able to take other people, a teacher's perspective and ideas and apply it in our classrooms, I think is paramount to our success here in our district. So-
I've never had an idea where I haven't brought it to staff and it's come back tenfold better, twenty-fold better. It always gets better when we collaborate together.
Right. So I'm glad to hear of the results that are happening with your, what you're doing in, in your, in your building. So, thank you. Principal Hulkey, I love hearing what's going on at Eagle Ridge. And, yeah, the affinity groups at the middle school, I think is, it's great. Before we know it, we'll have them in the elementary schools too. But I just, I want to thank the students for coming and sharing about your affinity groups and what those mean to you, what you're doing and supporting each other. You're helping others who may have, you know, difficulty even coming to school. Maybe it's hard for them. You're also encouraging them to come and be there instead of maybe missing school. So kudos to you for being part of that. So I thank you so much for being here, and, you know, keep it up. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Next, we will receive an update on the READ Act from Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Wurbe, members of the Board, Dr. Belmont. I appreciate taking a few minutes to share the update on the Minnesota Reading to Ensure Academic Development Act, or known as the READ Act, and the work that the folks in our district are doing in order to improve reading instruction for our students. The READ Act has three components. Professional development is one of those components. Currently, the district has 356 staff members who are engaged in READ Act training. This is Phase 1 training. They just celebrated the completion of their halfway mark for the training, and it's been just a tremendous amount of energy and work that they have put into this. I'm already hearing in the conversations, the applications of the work that they're doing. And so really, a tremendous amount of energy and positive force going into that particular training. The Department of Education has recently announced that Phase 2 training has been pushed back for one year. And so next year, we will continue on with our Phase 1 training, and we'll have approximately 75 staff who will be completing Phase 1 training, and then we estimate about 125 Phase 2, which is mostly secondary teachers, in '26, '27. The second component of the READ Act is universal screening and assessment. This year, MDE's guidance has added two additional subtests to the screening to occur for students in grades 2 or 3. This is an additional subtest that would screen for characteristics that might indicate dyslexia, and that has been added to grades 2 and 3. And we began that screening in this winter and will continue on with it in the spring. Screening tools for grades 4 through 12 have not yet been announced for MDE, by MDE at this time. The third component of the READ Act has to do with instructional materials. As the Department of Education, in its collaboration with CARRY at the University of Minnesota, have identified specific curriculums that are closely aligned to the science of reading, some of those materials we are continuing to work with here in 191. One of those is UFly, which has been vetted and adopted by our Special Education Department to use as a curriculum for students who are being serviced through IEPs for reading intervention. And they are also using Spire, which is another one that is directed specifically for students with reading disabilities. Some of those tools are also being piloted by our learning specialists as Tier 2 interventions for students in the general ed. And we continue to explore pilots for some of these particular tools for students in intervention for our middle schools. And Department of Education has indicated that it is November of 2025 when they will release the list of intervention tools that are highly aligned to the science of reading. And that ends my report.
Are there any comments or questions from board members? Director Alt?
Thank you, Chair Wurbe. Amina, I'm sure you've covered this before, so it may be a refresher of my memory. Universal screening, MDE you mentioned, has not identified the screening tool for grades 4 through 12 yet. Can you elaborate on how we're currently identifying and supporting and screening schools, students particularly at secondary?
Sure. In grades 4 through 8, and actually just this year, we added grade 9, we are using the same screener, which is the FastBridge reading suite of assessments that have been approved by MDE for grades K through 3. We use those assessments to identify students who are reading at benchmark or, and the tools within that screener also indicates very specifically what areas of challenge and need students might have with aligned interventions. And so in our middle schools, we have some reading interventionists. We do share the data with all of the students' teachers, and so we do use the tools from FastBridge as intervention tools. We also have continued diagnostics. Middle school interventionists have been trained through the University of Minnesota in what we call PRESS. And so those also have diagnostic tools that address phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, and reading comprehension. And so they continue to use those tools as well. They also are using SIPs, which is another aligned tool for foundational literacy as well. And we have been exploring some of the functional phonics and morphology tools that we might be able to apply to our middle schoolers as well.
And the high school?
And at high school, we have, we just used the screener in ninth grade this year. We do have students who have been identified previously and continue to be monitored. We no longer have a single course that is for reading intervention. We have students who are using UFly, who are being served with IEP services, Spire, and Language Live, both in middle school and high school, for students who have been identified with reading needs.
So just a clarifying question. The 75 you mentioned that are needed to do Phase 1?
Yes.
Are these like new teachers or?
It does include our estimated amount for new teachers. They are also include teachers this year who maybe were late hires and didn't get included in the program, or might have been included in the program and then had gone on leaves of absence. And so it's kind of a, kind of a wraparound for teachers whose timing just didn't allow them to participate.
Okay, got it. All right. Thank you. Thank you for the update.
Great, thank you very much.
We will now receive a report about the FY '26 achievement and integration budget from Isis Buchanan, Director of Educational Equity. Welcome, Director Buchanan.
Good evening, Chair Wurbe, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Belmont, and members of the Board. My name's Isis Buchanan, I'm Director of Educational Equity. And so tonight, I'm just going to give you an overview of our achievement and integration budget as we plan for fiscal year '26. Fiscal year '25, '26 will be the third year of our current three-year plan. This slide is just here to help us remember that our achievement and innovation program really is about using funds to enhance student achievement by making sure we have equitable opportunities for all students and to reduce the predictability of any academic- opportunities for all students and to reduce the predictability of any academic disparities. So we have four goals, and these might look familiar as they've been shared in the past. But one of them is centered around the graduation rate for our high school students. We also have a goal around increasing the percentage of students coming into kindergarten, you know, ready and prepared for school. And then the third goal is decreasing the demographic disproportionality in our rigorous high school courses. And then also increasing the percentage of students assessing, having access to teachers in classrooms that are using culturally responsive practices. So for fiscal year '26, we're looking at the $2,488.77. And some of the things that that funding supports are in alignment with what we've done in the past. We have our avid programming and staff members from teachers to coordinators and tutors. And we also have professional development. And I just put avid in social studies because right now, there's been PD in those areas of overlap. Our social workers, part of the salary for them. And then our cultural liaisons, part of the salary, or the full FTE for those 12 positions. We also added in the part of our Achievement and Integration Funds, pay for our specialists for American Indian culture, as well as part of our Indigenous Cultural Liaison. And also part of my role as well. And so the, I guess this amount that you see on the screen is similar to what we've had in the past. There's an increase of about $28,000. But I also just want to mention that with salary adjustments, you know, some of our staffing may have to shift because our funding is staying kind of flat and the same. However, we know that with each contract negotiation, you know, all the workers make more money. So that may impact the number of people we can have with those same funds. And then also looking at our student enrollment, for example, for liaisons, it's really important that we're looking at the students that we have in our schools and making sure that we have the liaisons, you know, to support the areas where we have a need. And I think that is the end. Any questions?
Board members, Director Buchanan will be presenting a recommendation to approve this budget later this evening under new business. I will ask that we hold comments and questions until that time. Thank you, Director Buchanan, for your report. Next, we will receive a report about our Indian Education Programming and the Vote of Concurrents or Non-Concurrents from Madison McKinney, 191 Indigenous Cultural Liaison, and Kelly Sunquist and Brian Berthay, co-chairs of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Welcome, everyone.
Oh, how many talk here? Board chair, Dr. Belmont, board members. It was really important to our parents that we started off our time together tonight in a good way. And so the gift you are receiving is a smudge kit. So that is a good example of what our students are carrying around with them in the schools, in classrooms. So many of them have one that they kind of carry with them each day. But sometimes if they don't have any, they know they can come to our space to create it. It's just a way for us to ground ourselves and keep ourselves centered. But really, it's just so that you all know that we're here and we come to you all in a good way. So with that, tonight, we are just going to go over some program highlights, kind of give you a rundown of what our program is and what we do. And then our parents will present our annual vote. It is important that we start off by recognizing and honoring Ms. Rebecca Musso. She has been serving as our American Indians Cultural Specialist for about the past five years. And so we are so sad that she is no longer with us, but we know that the opportunity that she had was just really good for her. And so we still carry her wisdom and her insights with us and all the work that we do. And so we just really wanted to make sure we took time to honor all of her contributions to our program. Got, we talk to a coin in a market here, got, I'm watching you, Madison McKinney in a market, got Indigenous Cultural Liaison, him, I'm sure. So hello, everybody. My name is, we talk to a coin. In English, I go by Madison McKinney, and I am the Indigenous Cultural Liaison for ISWAG 191.
Buju, and we're man and a dog, I mean, me no gizi dog. Kelly Sunquist, indigenous cause, and again, the other, need to wow. And this is an ABA, GAWA BA, beginning of GAG, and DUNJA BA. Hello, all of my relatives. It is a good day. My name is Kelly Sunquist. I am a descendant of the Otter Clan. I am Anishinaabe from the White Earth Nation. I am co-chair of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee.
I mean, Brian Berthay, Nindishnekas, Makua Nindodam, Ga Asanisakag, Mishkwa Gamiwi, Zaga Aganin. My name's Brian Berthay. I'm Makua Clan, or Bear Clan, excuse me. And I come from Red Lake District, or the place of Little Rocks, in Red Lake Band of Chippewa.
The American Indian Education Program aims to reconnect and strengthen Indigenous learners to traditional educational methods and cultural practices to promote positive experiences within the public schools. Our vision is to create a supportive school environment where all American Indian students can reconnect and strengthen their cultural identity to thrive within their school community. We are committed to strengthening our Indigenous communities and our connections to land and language.
We wanted to give you guys a picture of what our student enrollment is. This count, or on the right-hand side, you have last year's count. On the left-hand side, you have the current school year count. We wanted to go with like our most accurate count. And so this is back from the beginning of January, when Rebecca was still here with us. So it has been updated since then, but as we're in this transition, we're really wanting to ensure we have accurate student counts. And so we just wanted to give you the most accurate of what we've last had. On average, at the high school, on a weekly basis, we're serving about 20 students, which may not seem like a lot, but for us, it is incredible to have that many students in our classroom, just coming in and out. They know they can come and get a bottle of water and head back to class. And then at our middle schools, we have, we service on a weekly basis probably about, on average, 10 to 12 students at each middle school. And as you saw from Eagle Ridge, our ISWAG group at the middle schools probably have about six to eight students that come on a regular basis. Again, it's so, it warms our heart to see them every week. So we wanted, since so many of us are new, we wanted to make sure we were getting all the puzzle pieces kind of put together. So the next two slides are a review of what Isis Buchanan shared with us last meeting. These are the recommendations that the parent committee presented to the board last year. And so we really just wanted to make sure that we're kind of like piecing all the pieces together. So we just wanted to make sure you had in front of you what those recommendations were from last year. And now we're going to kind of share some highlights. Before I pass it over, the, each main bullet point is what guides our work. And so in All American Indian Education Program, these are the main sections that we kind of have to break our goals down into. And so we just wanted to share highlights of each of those tasks that we have.
For post-secondary preparation, we have a room that's dedicated to all the Indigenous kids at the high school and the district. That's where we have our APEC meetings at. We have craft nights. I mean, a lot of, a lot of laughter going on in that room, and a lot of good conversations going on in that room. We have our intercultural awareness, which is basically our showcase that we had, which I think is where this picture is from. There's a, there's a lot of, to do with that as far as like the South of the River Powwow, our drum and dances that we have, I think it's once a month or twice a month. We love them. So there's a lot of, a lot of that going on. And then the positive self-image. We've had the school naming, we've renamed the schools. There's been a lot of posts from the school district recognizing some of the Indigenous kids in there with like Orange Shirt Day and things like that. So there's been a lot of great things that have been, have been going on within the school year.
We also wanted to, again, highlight our student groups. So ISWAG, it stands for Indigenous Student Weekly Advisory Group. So once a week, they have an optional advisory group where we come and we, that's our opportunity to share with our students some of the cultural teachings. And so this year, one of our biggest focuses has been on beadwork. And so a lot of our students are starting beadwork projects. And so just really reconnecting them to the actual cultural teachings and how we can reintegrate that into public schools as a support, both at Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three levels. That is my personal favorite highlight. Again, when they're all in a classroom and then they leave, like the good spirit, like energy is just there. And you feel it, and it makes a difference. After our APEC meetings, like the next day, I come in and it just, you just feel the energy. It's just really great. The last one is the curriculum relevance. This year, we've been really heavily focused on doing PDE. And so we've been able to hit every, pretty much every major PD session that has happened. So the most recent was the BHS Mini Conference that was for secondary students. We had a really great turnout at that. But we really try to make sure that each of those sessions are specifically catered to those students and to how we can best support the staff that are working with that age group. So at the secondary level, we did focus on what we're doing with our student groups. Whereas the early childhood, we're really focusing on how can we get people excited about it? How can we build curiosity at a young age rather than focusing on like the heavy information? So yeah, we're really just trying to make sure that it's relevant to each, each level. Yeah. Any other highlights?
This one's me. Okay. So the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee serve an advisory role and help ensure that the American Indian students are receiving culturally relevant and equitable educational opportunities. The APEC Committee is crucial to achievement and success of American Indian students and offers a value, valuable opportunity to strengthen district and family partnerships. So. So kind of, I'm not sure how aware, like if you guys are aware of the process that we go through to, to come up with our vote, but there's a rubric that we follow. And we actually use two APEC meetings. Those are usually scheduled for two-hour sessions each time, but we, it was four hours each time where we sat there and had very healthy conversations and really reflections and like disagreements. And so like, there was a lot of time and energy put into this, into our vote. And our vote was of non-concurrent. When, when, after we looked at everything, that was our vote of non-concurrent. And we do have some recommendations for that. Our recommendation for the first, I'll take the top three. So review disciplinary actions and review data of middle school Indian, American, excuse me, middle school American Indian students. So just looking at that data. More recognition by and from the individual buildings of Indigenous Peoples' Day and other disturbances of American Indian cultural heritage. The salary of American, salaries of American Indian Education Program staff need to come out of the General Education Fund as well.
The last two are provide cultural space and staffing for smudging space in each building. Last one is provide cultural trunks for each school for staff to use.
There are some events still left this school year that we would love for one of you guys, I mean, as many, all of you really, if you guys would all, we would love to have you. There is a conference coming up, the MIEA. I know that myself and Kelly go to this every year, and my wife, we go to this every year, that we learn a lot. And it's really helped us navigate, you know, our APEC waters. And it's really, it's really helped us a lot. We also have the South of the River Powwow, which is a big thing for us. A lot of kids sing and dance at that, and it's a culmination of, you know, the whole year. You know, every drum and dance that we have every month, they go there. It's, it's a lot of courage for those kids to get out there and do that. So if you guys were to come and support them, it would really go a long way. So.
I'm going to go off script just a second here. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate that a lot of the recommendations come from just the voices of the students. A lot of it is transparency. Again, we spent hours kind of going back and forth on kind of what is happening in our schools, how are we serving our students, how are our students feeling in the buildings. And one of the really cool things about what we have coming up is our community is very unique in the sense that like we host, our Burnsville High School hosts the South of the River Powwow, right? And so every month, we get together with all these different districts. And once a year, it's so fun to just like see them all in our space and coming to BHS. And I know last year, like as we're kind of talking to the students and getting them ready, they're like, they come here to our school? I'm like, yeah, like we get to be the ones to host it. And, and so a lot of the stuff is spread without the, or throughout the community. Even the land acknowledgement here in the building, both of us saw through mutual outside, like, community members within the Indigenous community came in, saw it, took a picture. They were sharing about it on social media. So it really does make a difference and have an impact on the communities and the students and families that we're working with. So in the, in the process of coming to the vote, it was very clear that we wanted to make sure that it was being done collaboratively. So even as we're disagreeing, we're like, we can disagree, but let's solve it together. And so again, that's why our parents really wanted to make sure you all knew that we're coming to you in a good way, that this isn't like friction, right? It's just really, how can we continue to make sure that our Indigenous students are feeling seen each and every day in our buildings? With that, again, kind of retouching on our land acknowledgement and the importance of it. In our PD sessions with our students, we've just been reminding them that our land acknowledgement is a reminder that every day, every interaction that we have with our Indigenous students is an opportunity for us to provide historical healing. And it goes so, it's such a big deal. It may not seem that way, but these land acknowledgements are really important for us to use as active reminders to say, hey, we have an opportunity to change something that historically has never been done. And so we hope that that empowers you all as well to, to just know that even something as simple as a land acknowledgement can really have deep impact. So with that, we want to make sure that we are open for any questions. I know we have a lot of new faces, and so if there are things that don't make sense or if we can clarify, we'd be happy to. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do want to thank you for the work that you do. I, I know that the students that I see throughout our district, who are part of your community, part of our community, but also part of your community, really appreciate your support and, and that scene. And, and I appreciate that you do the work you do. And I appreciate that you challenge us to do work too.
Thank you. Always together.
Director Alt?
Thank you. It is bittersweet that we are receiving a vote of non-concurrents at the same time. The context was very helpful. And we have work to do. That's, you know, I think it's, there's a lot that's going on, and I appreciate the reminder each year of, of what all is going on in our, in our schools on behalf of our Indigenous community. And we do still have work to do. And I appreciate you all coming tonight because it, it makes it that much more real as a, as, as feedback to us on, on the work that, that we need to do. So thank you very much.
I have something I want to read. But before I, I do that, I just want to share that I make it a point to always go to the South of the River Powwow. I love it. I've always had a strong connection to Native American dance. It's very powerful. It's something very moving about it. And I connect with it. You know, it just, it's, it's moving. So, I really, it evokes emotion for me. So, I never, I try to always go to that. And I really appreciate seeing the, the feather ceremony as well. So, I encourage all the other board members to come as well. So.
If I may, if I see, if we see you there, we are gonna bring you out there during an intertribal. You're gonna come and dance during an intertribal.
You've just signed yourself up.
All right. I'll hold you. So, I want to express to co-chairs Sunquist and Birthday, Ms. McKinney, and all the members of the Advisory Committee, our thanks and gratitude as a board. We value your tireless dedication and efforts in evaluating and holding the district accountable to our commitments in serving the indigenous students and families in District 191. Our board loves to hear about how indigenous culture is being expressed and celebrated in our schools and community and how steps we've taken are impacting indigenous students and families and efforts to better serve them. As we continue to reflect and understand what makes us unique as a district, it is our strength of empowering our students to honor and embrace their culture. In giving students and families the support and acknowledgement that their voices matter, we, as a board and a district, are ensuring the decisions we make are inclusive and support the vision of 191. We appreciate the insight and critical lens that the Advisory Committee brings, as it is, it is fundamental to strengthening our partnership. This is especially important, being mindful of the erasure of indigenous cultures that public schools in this country have historically undertaken. As the Board of Education, in partnership with Dr. Battle and her team, we will continue to work towards fulfilling our commitments that will reinforce our relationships with our indigenous family and students. It is my hope that we will continue to come from a space of growth and learning. In following our core values of inclusive partnerships and cultural proficiency, we look forward to collaborating to seek change and take action. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Team McGee.
Now, it is time to receive updates on board committees, appointments, and school assignments. Do board members have any reports they wish to share?
This is the last meeting. This is committee meetings?
Uh, this is.
Yeah.
Yes, committee meetings.
Yeah. I couldn't remember what time of the month it was. I'll go. Legislative Committee, we met last Tuesday and discussed, Dr. Battle shared the legislative, shared legislative platform of Dakota, of Dakota County in terms of all the soups in Dakota County. And a lot of that had similarities to our legislative platform. And then, we spent the bulk of our time talking about the day on the hill and being ready to meet with our legislators and encouraging, and ways to engage our community, maybe to join us on March 10th. That concludes that report. I can continue with 9/17, too. So, I've weakened on talking. 9/17 meets the first Tuesday of every month. And during that meeting, we reviewed a revised budget as well as being informed that there is going to be financial challenges as many districts will be encountering, including ours, in the year ahead. And so, that they're doing a lot of work in terms of reevaluating some of their expenses and finances and rightsizing as well.
Are there any other committee reports?
Thank you. Yes, the Policy Committee met last, on Tuesday. And just one note, usually I don't mention the specific policies because they, of course, are coming forward subsequently. The policy did, Policy Committee did review Policy 899, which is school naming. And the policy is coming back to the committee a second time for discussion because there was, there were some really good recommendations. To sum up, basically, where I believe the committee has landed is that we want to maintain the ability to name schools after people in alignment with our core values and our mission statement, as well as add potentially the ability to change school, to name schools, change school names to land and possibly nature-based. But it's still a work in progress. Just wanted to give the board an update, given our conversation with, with APAC tonight.
Is that it? No other, no other reports?
I have no negotiations report.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We will now move to the business portion of our meeting. We will start by approving the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold a discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved to, for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent items? Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson.
Second.
Second by Director Chester. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. In our first item under new business, we are being asked to approve the American Indian Education Programming Resolution and the vote of non-concurrents. Information about this vote was presented earlier by 191 Indigenous Cultural Liaison Madison McKinney and co-chairs of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, Kelly Sunquist and Brian Birthday. Presenting the final resolution and recommendation regarding the acceptance of the vote will be Isis Buchanan, Director of Education Equity. Welcome.
Hello, again. And so, my recommendation is pursuant Minnesota statute that we, or that you, the school board, accept the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee's vote of non-concurrents and review the recommendations for improvement that they shared.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation put forth by Director Buchanan to the Board of Education to respond in writing to the recommendations put forth by the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee within 60 days and provide the written responses to both the Advisory Committee and to the Office of Education?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Second by Director Alt. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Next, we are being asked to approve the Achievement and Integrated Budget for FY '26, presented by Isis Buchanan, Director of Educational Equity. Welcome back.
And so, it's my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the proposed Fiscal Year '26 Achievement and Integration Revenue Budget.
Is there a motion to approve the Achievement and Integrated Budget for FY '26?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Second by Director Anderson. Is there any discussion?
I just have a clarifying question.
Sure.
The funding for the Achievement and Integration Budget comes from the state, correct?
Yes.
That's all I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Yep. Oh, sorry. Yes, Director Alt.
Thank you. So, I noticed in the budget sheets, the investment in an avid summer field trip to engage our elementary students. How do we connect the high school seniors with our middle school avid students?
So, right now, I know that with avid, there are some carryover things that the middle school students do. Because a lot of times, the teachers are recommending the students who started avid in middle school continue in high school. Like, I don't do that work specifically to be able to give you those examples of how that's done. But I do know that the high school works to recruit, you know, middle school students. And then, at the elementary levels, we also have teachers who recommend students in middle school to join avid. And so, there is some cross-support that happens from each of the levels.
I guess the reason I ask is, I, anecdotally, it sounds like we lose some of our avid students in the transition from middle school to high school. And wonderful to hear that we're engaging our elementary students with avid, because they, it's good to plant the seed with both the students and their parents in some way, that it's there as, as an option. But also making sure that we're, we're really making it clear to the middle school students what an opportunity it is when they, when they get to high school. And so, we don't lose them.
Yeah. Like, I know that we usually have that field trip where the seniors go back to their elementary schools. And that's what that line item is about. But I think it's a great idea to think about, how could we make a stop at our middle schools, too, for some of those students. But they really do get a lot of joy out of going. And it's a lot of pride for the students who go back to their schools. And just connect with the teachers that they had when they were there, as well as students who they don't even know, who are looking at them like, what, you used to be here? But it is a, a nice culminating event for students who have, you know, spent a lot of time in avid.
And where, another question, where is avid PD offered?
So, the professional development is tied to the teachers at the school. So, we have the avid site coordinators. And so, they may have professional development, or they help, like, find teachers who are doing avid work to, like, build professional development for other teachers. And then, also with our secondaries having school-wide avid, a lot of that also connects to all the strategies that we do at, like, school-wide for each site. So, in middle school, I believe they have the avid six, and a high school has the big three. And so, there's different ways that each school targets the school-wide avid support. And then, they have plans that they, you know, work with those coordinators on to make sure that the elective courses are being supported and teachers have training. We have had some new teachers join avid. And so, that comes with some formal training. And so, this year, we also have, like, new administrators who are joining and new teachers. And so, really trying to make sure that, with the demonstration schools, that we really have everyone well-trained and knowledgeable about the work. And filling the gaps for those new people who've joined the team.
Great. Thank you.
Going back to Director Hume's question about where the funds come from, is it, is it restricted for a specific purpose as well? So, and what is that purpose?
Yeah. So, I think if we, when I, when I shared the slide about, I think it's Slide Two, and I don't have it here. But really, it's about the ratio and economic integration. And so, we partner with the Lakeville School District to be a partner with them so that we're, so that the, that we're meeting those needs of diversifying both of our districts in a way where we partner to do things together, increasing student achievement. So, we have to have goals around that. And so, we have that early childhood goal and the high school graduation, as well as having those equitable educational opportunities. And so, we are using some of those funds to pay for the avid school-wide and avid elective programs. And so, a lot of that work funnels there. And it also connects with the partnership that we have with Lakeville. Because there are things that we can plan together and do together to help enrich both of our districts. And then, also, the money is also used to just reduce that disparities that are in some of the courses that are offered. As we try to use avid and other strategies that support that, to get more students enrolled and engaged in those courses, so that they can see all the pathways and know that, whatever options they want, you know, like, we still have things, you know, here for them. It's just, I'm laughing, because that, one of the students who was sitting back there was a graduate, a graduate of our school district, a sibling of, of the student. And I was just trying to tell her about, do you need a job? Do you want to work in the program? Because I just think sometimes, they just need to hear that there's all those other opportunities. And so, I really think the large purpose for the Achievement and Integration Program is to really just make sure we're given opportunity to diverse students and that they have the strategies and things that they need to be supported. And also, it strengthens the education for all students, similar to, you know, some things that the principal shared earlier today.
So, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Up next, we will now be asked to approve a dissolution of the Joint Powers of Agreement for the Burnsville Youth Collaborative at the Garage, presented once again by Stacy Solvine.
Did you skip one?
I did.
I think you're one ahead of me.
Oh. Oh, sorry. The next item on our agenda is to consider approval for the Joint Powers of Agreement for the Burnsville Senior Center. Presenting the recommendation on this this evening will be Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Good evening, Chair Wur, Dr. Belmont, members of the board. Every three years, we bring to the board a recommendation to renew the Joint Powers Agreement with the Burnsville City for our senior center. This is a longstanding success that we've had with Burnsville. And it is a shared responsibility. We provide the, the space downstairs. We provide a coordinator, insurance, different activities, although the seniors pretty much run themselves as to what they do. But they are very active, if you're ever downstairs. And then, Burnsville, the city of Burnsville picks up about 50% of the cost as well. So, it is a shared responsibility. It is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the Joint Powers of Agreement for Burnsville, for the Burnsville Senior Center.
Is there a motion to approve the Joint Powers of Agreement for the Burnsville Senior Center?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Second by Director Mickelson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Okay. Up next, we will now be asked to approve a dissolution of the Joint Powers of Agreement for the Burnsville Youth Collaborative at the Garage, presented once again by Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you. Late January, we were notified by Twin Cities Callous Music that they would be pulling out of the Joint Powers Agreement that we have with them and the city of Burnsville to run our Burnsville Youth Collaborative at the Garage. The last date in which they'll be providing services will be March 27, 2025. And we are moving forward with, both the city and the district are moving forward with recommendations for dissolution of this JPA. So, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the dissolution of Joint Powers of Agreement for Burnsville Youth Collaborative at the Garage on March 31, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the dissolution of the Joint Powers of Agreement for the Burnsville Youth Collaborative at the Garage?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Second by Director Anderson. Is there any discussion? Director Alt.
Thank you. It may be premature to ask this question, Stacy. Just wondering, I, I know this impacts the after-school programming with BYC and, and the students that participate in the music.
At the Garage.
At the Garage.
Right.
What kinds of conversations are we having around that, knowing that it's going to end in March?
I, I don't necessarily foresee any continuation at the Garage. I think the city has its own designs on that space as well, moving forward.
Yep. Yep.
Uh, so we are using um, funding um, that goes towards um, our, towards Allison Jordan. She's our, like, our um, supervisor for community education. So they will continue to provide after-school programming for the middle school-aged kids as well, moving forward.
But we don't know if it's going to be music-centered.
I have no ideas to the nature of it at this point in time.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Um, up next, we are being asked to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 504, Student Dress and Appearance, also being presented by, oops, sorry, I'm on the wrong one again.
It's okay.
I'm sorry. We will now begin to consider approval of changes to policies. The first policy that we are being asked to approve on a first reading basis is Policy 634, Electronic Technologies Acceptable Use. Presenting the recommendation this evening is Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent.
Welcome, Dr. Belmont.
Thank you Chair Wur, uh, members of the board. The, this Policy 634 received a significant review and discussion from our Policy Review Committee, including the meeting on February 18th, 2025. Um, it's unique in the sense that we place this in policy, in the 600 series, and um, our review committee was really thoughtful in placing it there. Um, Director Rachel Gordon, who couldn't be here this evening, was instrumental in this review process that started in August, um, or in summer for sure, uh, looking at, we look at technology, acceptable use, um, technology is ever-changing as the board knows, and so to try to make sure that our policy language is um, both aligned to current system realities, as well as um, trying to get out in front of the ever-changing world. Um, finally, uh, one of the other things that prompted a 634 review and um, change requests, uh, is the new cellphone policy legislation that um, went in last spring from the Minnesota State Legislature, requiring all boards to adopt a cellphone policy by the spring. Um, like, the board to take note of the fact that our principals have been engaged with their school communities since last summer in um, finding the best, most meaningful ways to implement cellphone procedures at the sites. So um, so this policy is a start. Um, however, we're prepared to produce enhancements, clarifications, either through the student handbook and/or um, regulations. So we, we want to make sure the Policy Review Committee remains engaged on this topic of cellphones.
Is there a motion to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 634?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Anderson. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yep, Director Hume.
Um, so under the cellphone use section, um, and, and instructing the superintendent and school district administration to create rules and procedures, and then at the end it says, "Rules and procedures may be designed for grades K through five, six through eight, nine through 12, and special programs." Is it safe to assume that all of the elementary schools will have the same policies and procedures in place, and all, and the two middle schools will, like, they're not going to have different policies at Gideon Pine versus Harriet Bishop?
Thank you, Director Hume, that did come up.
Or Eagle Ridge versus Nicollet.
Yes, that, thank you, Director Hume. Um, that did come up in our review committee discussions, and that's, uh, you've named the intent of that language.
That's what I was assuming, but I don't like to assume. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Up next, we are being asked to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 504, Student Dress and Appearance, also being presented by Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you Chair Wur. Um, our Policy Review Committee also reviewed um, Policy 504, Student Dress and Appearance, at our February 18th meeting. Um, less substantial changes were put forth for this one, um, and, and moved forward. Uh, they included removing the term grooming to align better with MSBA model policy, as well as um, kind of current interpretation of language in our, in our community. Um, also, um, aligned with MSBA language, we added um, just a statement about how district staff, as well as um, families in the entire community tries to seek out and model appropriate dress for our students.
Is there a motion to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 504?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Mickelson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Our final recommendation before us this evening is to consider approval on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 613, Graduation Requirements. Presenting the recommendation will be Amina Oftodol, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Welcome, Director Oftodol.
Thank you Chair Wur, members of the board. Dr. Belmont, uh, this uh, particular policy is one that is reviewed annually. Um, the significant changes on the definitions portion are restructuring those to better align with MSBA's recommendations. The content still remains the same, but they have been reorganized. There have been updates to update From the World's Best Workforce to Comprehensive Achievement and Career Readiness, that was updated in the legislature, as well as some of the um, references have been updated as well.
Is there a motion to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policies 613? Moved by Director Mickelson.
Second. It's me again, sorry.
Seconded by Director Anderson. Is there any discussion?
I just do this every time.
Um, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a work session. We will be taking time to review and discuss the FY26 preliminary investments. I move that we take a brief recess and return to this agenda item at 8:15 to begin the work session. Oh, moved by myself, seconded by Director Alt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Please return to the dais at 8:15 to begin the work session.
Didn't want to have discussion.
It is time to start our work session on the FY26 preliminary investments. To kick things off, we will start with a report from Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, along with Amina Oftodol, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Dr. Kathy Funston, Director of Strategic Partnerships and Pathways, and Isis Buchanan, Director of Educational Equity.
Thank you Chair Wur, um, members of the board. On behalf of Dr. Battle, we're here, um, some of our team members to present the fiscal year 2025-26 budget preliminary investments. So these are areas that are um, priorities, places of wanting to make sure that we have sustained implementation and enhancement going forward, to give the board um, a clearer picture um, about where some of the um, where some of the priorities and recommendations are coming from, when you hear from Superintendent Battle at the next meeting about um, some of her budget recommendations. Um, you'll hear some um, help getting us grounded in making sure that we have a structurally and sustainable budget going forward, that we um, continue to prioritize our pre-K-12 pathways. Um, if you recall, the board asked us to make sure that, around a year ago, to make sure that makerspaces were alive and well in our schools, so to make sure that those continue to function and spark our elementary students towards pathways, um, access and engagement, to make sure that we're wisely spending in areas like achievement and integration, like Director Buchanan presented on previously, and then that we make sure that we have a very transparent, open, and strong timeline for budget feedback, and inclusive for, um, timeline for budget feedback. Pass it. Um, Director Oftodol, are you next? I'm not sure who's next, or should we, should I continue to kind of go through some of the pieces on elementary pathways? Um, we can go up to the next considerations for everyone to um, make sure that we know that the strategic roadmap drives our vision and names our values, as well as our strategic directions, that we really, um, Dr. Funston had led a, if you recall, a really robust process in which we named those profile of learner attributes, and that um, those are, it's kind of the end in mind when we look at where our um, resources are prioritized and, and enhanced throughout our student system and experience, throughout our students' experience in our system. Um, we have instructional priorities. We have instructional priorities that you're going to hear about today, or that you've already heard about with our pathways and the science of reading, student support services, as well as making sure that we are always paying attention to the fact that if students don't feel like they belong, if there's not clarity around expectations, and that those expectations are of high standards with, if they are of high standards and are communicated with by caring adults, we know students will engage in learning at higher levels. Finally, we have goals that the Board has helped set around stabilizing enrollment and increasing enrollment over time. We're seeing really encouraging signs, both through our pre-K success and our virtual academy in recent years. Also, with budget is operational realities, and just being able to maintain the sizable square footage that occurs in our school districts so that learning can occur. Next slide, please.
Sure. When we take a look at our strategies for this sustainable budget, we really need to look at grounding ourselves in our strategic roadmap around our vision statement, our core values, and our strategic decisions. Tonight, I want to just highlight some things that we'll be doing, that we've done this year to prioritize their investments in instruction, including in our pathways. One of the things we will continue to do to maintain that sustainable budget is to maintain our class size parameters and continue to right-size to match our enrollment. We also want to make sure, as the Board has had many of discussions in the last couple of sessions, about maintaining our balance in expenditures and revenues, especially for our restricted funds, and considering the use of our restricted funds prior to dipping into our general undesignated funds, and so ensuring that we're using those in a really fiscally responsible way, and then understanding that there are changes in revenue streams and expenses, and that those are constantly inflow and influx, and making adjustments to respond to those flows and fluxes. This year, for elementary pathways, we really put together kind of this broad picture of what that looks like for our elementary in alignment, and so for 25-26, we really are looking at maintaining as much of that programming as we can. We have reached kind of a stabilized place by embedding the Makerspaces. We'll continue to right-size our Makerspace experiences with our students, but we do, one of the things that I think I just wanted to highlight because it was just such a really high point, was listening to the leadership development pieces from the Harriet Bishop students, and knowing that investing in that whole peer leader student council and that leadership development with our elementary students was one of the recommendations from our elementary principals, and to support that as part of our pathways work in leadership development overall. And it was just really, it was just really warming to see that highlight from Harriet Bishop, and knowing that similar things are happening in other, at other sites, but that was one of those initiatives that really the elementary principals wanted to strengthen and use that as part of the extracurricular, and embed that as part of that pathways experience in their, in their schools. And so, knowing that we have other extracurricular experiences, we continue to support our enrichment experiences, our students, all of our students in grades three were able to visit the Minneapolis Institute of Art this year with the supported funding of the pathways and our restricted funds through the Title IV, as well as the Orchestra Hall trip, which was funded as well for all fourth graders. These have become really highlight experiences for students, to the point where now siblings are going, "I can't wait until I get to that grade, so that I do get to experience that thing that my sibling enjoyed so very much." And so, those are some of the, some of the pieces, and continuing to explore, one of the things I wanted to highlight was the work that our physical education teachers are doing around, not only last year, they worked a lot on collaborative and cooperative games, and this year, they are taking that one step further and had some professional development from the Naski Company, which is a Native American company that sells designs and sells Native American historical games, and are moving forward with a new curricular unit for their, for next year, based on the Native games. And so, really, really excited about how they're incorporating some of that Indian Education for All, and taking that a little bit further in kind of some of these exploratory kinds of opportunities for, for students. And so, those enrichment things continue, we continue to focus on advanced math. You saw some of the work that Hidden Valley was doing with math, and just know that as part of that experience, the Advanced Learning Specialist was part of that team that worked with those Hidden Valley students for that burst of service as well. So, really trying to ensure that we have those stable experiences, and those things are continuing to be provided for students across the elementary scope. The Makerspace timeline, we really took the support of the Board in increasing the Advanced Learning Specialist staffing at each site, and really, those folks took upon themselves that exciting piece of how to stabilize, and then also provide that consistent experience of Makerspaces for all students in K through five. They met and worked collaboratively with the Digital Learning Specialist, who had worked with the Makerspaces in the past, really did a great job with utilizing all of the current existing Makerspace equipment and materials. They moved to a mobile site, mobile carts, because there really isn't a central location for Makerspaces anywhere in the building, but what this allows for is that the Makerspaces then go to the classrooms for the students. And so, it really allows a little bit more flexibility for that, opportunities for students. What they did was created lessons that they provided to the teachers in K-5. They did video guides for each of those lessons, and then also did written lesson cards for each of the experiences. This year, they created banded experiences for K-1, 2, 3, and 4, 5, and then they'll continue to expand those. And they aligned each of the experiences to one of the four career pathways. And so, students got, get multiple experiences with the Makerspaces with their classroom teacher. It is a balance of digital and non-digital or analog experiences for the students. In addition, just kind of thinking about what, and this is just kind of a snapshot, similar to the one that you had last year, we did a full past experience, this is a one-year investment, and so this is the investment for just this 24-25 school year. District General Funds, that was, there's an increase responding to the increase in staffing for the Advanced Learning Specialists at the elementary, as well as it continues to support Middle School Project Lead the Way and the Elementary Spark experiences. Capital Funds, those are our textbook and sophomore, and software expenses. We put some very specific pieces in place to support our CTE and the Associate of Arts pathway, with some additional textbooks and some new courses that were happening there, as well as supporting some consumables that happen in our career and technical ed courses, such as food or construction materials. And that is only partially because those are only the district, are the district capital funds, the building capital funds are also supporting some of those programs as well. Restricted funds, those would be our Title Funds, our Perkins Funds, technology, our the tech levy, and some other kinds of experiences, or restricted funds, and those are some of the experiences, some of those enrichment experiences that students have, such as Math Masters, which we'll be hosting again this year in April, and we're very excited to be a site for our fourth and fifth grade students. Dr. Funston wasn't able to be here this evening, but she has shared that out of the $362,000 that are being allocated for grant funds, do not represent all of the grant funds that are available. There are more grant funds available, these are the ones that have just simply been targeted and allocated at this time, and so there, there is still funds that continue to be available for some of these particular projects.
And the same information that I shared earlier is also here, because our achievement and integration budget is also a part of Dr. Battle's plan of how we'll support our district. And so, if you, I think, the, to add any clarity on what those pieces of that grant funding covers, this is that slide again, that I wasn't able to go back to earlier. And then, the four goals that we have also overlap with some of our other projects, and then finally, that total amount, and, and just again, just stating that with the increase of staff salaries, like some of the numbers of FTE that you might see there may have to decrease, or be shifted to meet the needs of the current students we have, if there are those adjustments needed.
So, well, sometimes the information and realities that the Board is, go back one slide, please.
That was the, sorry.
Thank you.
I believe, sorry.
Okay, thank you. So that as, I was thinking that sometimes the realities that the Board is navigating seem to be more and more unpredictable when it comes to budget. We continue to follow a predictable and proven timeline. January, February, the Board approved last year's fiscal year 25 revised budget, and then received a report on some assumptions and parameter options at the most recent board meeting. In March, Superintendent Battle plans to present her initial budget recommendations to the Board, followed by feedback time period, time period of collecting feedback and making adjustments based on the latest available information and realities. Finally, June 12th, the fiscal year 26 adopted budget would be presented with formal approval earmarked for June 26th. Here's some of those next steps that are articulated on the final slide. March 14th, an online feedback survey will open, staying open for a little more than a month. March and April, April will be school and program level parent meetings, where we can collect both qualitative and quantitative information from them, and presentation then will be shared with families and staff, so that they can increase their understanding about the complexities and realities facing our community with budget, and then also having those multiple opportunities to provide feedback. Finally, letting the Board and the community know that a community presentation will be offered to all families and the public right here at Diamond Head Education Center on April 16th, 6:00 p.m. Thank you to Director Buchanan, Director Oftedal, and that concludes our report. Back to you.
Are there any comments or questions from Board members?
I think for clarity's sake, I'm going to keep going to achievement and integration, just because I think, because it's a singular pot of money that is separate from the general fund, and for everybody whose eyes are on finance and budget, kind of understanding the buckets. Are we informed by government that this is the allotted amount of money we are eligible to receive, or do we send them what we need? You know, so here's the larger pot, and you're eligible to apply for a certain amount, and we ask for something.
Yeah, the achievement and integration funds are based on enrollment, and so those are set by MDE. We do get a preliminary amount, and then we set our budget based on that preliminary amount, and then it is adjusted based on our final enrollment number. So it is a number that is set directly to us, and it is restricted for the purposes that our approved achievement and integration budgets goals are set.
Yeah, okay. Because it just, you know, because it's like, it's a cap, you can't ask for more, so.
Right.
But I do appreciate the, how we're looking at diversifying our revenue sources coming in from, you know, like here are grants that, you know, Kathy Funston's been able to get, especially Greater Twin Cities Nightway, thank you, and, and then use of other funds that are in addition to the general fund.
I have a question. If I may. So the title slide is preliminary investments, but based on the presentation, it seems like it's more, these are the things we're continuing to spend money on, and not like, when I hear the word investments, I'm thinking new things, but just, I just want to be clear that this is more things that we're continuing to invest in, as opposed to new investments.
Right, and in the K-12 pathways, we don't have new investments, we are going to continue to fund these investments at this level.
Yep, thank you. And then, this might be more of a this side of the table question. So this is a work session, do you and Dr. Battle, are you looking for any kind of direction from the Board at this point, or is this more of an informational work session?
I'm not sure.
Last year, the Board had requested that we share some of those preliminary investments, and so, in our conversations, Dr. Battle and I, and Dr. Funston, and Director Buchanan wanted to make sure that for the purposes of discussion as you are moving forward and prior to her sharing her preliminary, or her proposed budget, that you had the background information for some things that you had identified in prior years.
And I appreciate that, because just given the size and scope of the total budget, sometimes it's nice to have it in little bite-sized pieces, and obviously, we talk a lot about pathways, and the achievement and integration is very important, so I do appreciate having a little, a little nugget of a budget update, and not the whole massive thing in one, in one go. So thank you.
And I think it also is a fair reminder, as we continue to move through the budget process, of the different restrictions, to Leslie's point, that there's the general fund, and then there are these other funding streams that have their limitations. It's always a good reminder for us and for the community.
And I think also, one of the points that we wanted to make very clear to you as a Board and to the members of the public, is that one of our considerations is to utilize our restricted funds to the highest level that we possibly can, and when we look at programs like pathways, being able to, to direct those restricted funds to those specific purposes, and, and knowing that those are priority experiences for our students, allows us to really be clear and transparent about how those restricted funds are being allocated and being utilized prior to then using general funds.
And I also was thinking, as we were hearing your report, just how thankful I am, and I know this Board is, that our community renewed the tech levy, because it would be an entirely different conversation, and seeing even just at a top-line summary level, how the tech levy funds are supporting our students and learning, knowing that there's a myriad of other ways that the levy funds are also helping, but so very thankful that our community renewed that, that levy.
I think the only thing I would add with restricted funds, especially restricted revenue, sometimes that's a good thing, because it protects the things we care about.
This concludes our work session. The time is 8:37, and having no further agenda items, I will now adjourn this meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.[1769.82]